The board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a legal matter and contractual matter. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Bob Teeger.
Willow Barrett.
Catherine Natto.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaugh.
Yulma Venkman.
John Wallston.
John McPherson.
And Meredith is not able to be here this evening. Do we have any pig students visiting us this evening? Welcome. Thanks for coming to the meeting. You guys have an obligation to stay here until the meeting is over or nine o'clock, whichever comes first. And there are sign out sheets around the table. Make sure you sign out before you leave so that you get credit for being here. First up is the approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the December 20th, 2023 regular board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Three, meeting reports. And first is the superintendent's report.
Sure, thanks. We're going to just do a quick capital project update. So we had our last one in November, and we're getting ready in the next few weeks after Shrek is over at the middle school to start the middle school auditorium. But John was going to just show everyone a couple of pictures and where we are, and we do have made some progress since our last update, so.
We have.
Go ahead, John.
All right. Thank you, Jody.
Maybe not.
Please. All right. Just a quick overview of the capital projects in terms of funding and what they're tied to in terms of bond projects. So the fall 2021 bond project was roughly $40.7 million of capital project and associated costs. Then in this past fall, in October, we went out for an additional $4.6 million associated with the middle school auditorium specifically. There's over 200 project scope elements between the two capital projects. Benefits across the district, all buildings, all operational areas and capacities. And the goal and approach for the capital projects were to support the district mission and four goals of academics, character, community, and wellness. For, I'm going to just run through some of the schools in terms of what has been completed and what is on tap, both for the 22, 23 fiscal year and the 23, 24 fiscal year. So for Eagle Elementary School, the outdoor pavilion has been completed, the stormwater retention and restoration has been completed, and that's what that picture to the right is associated with, and technology upgrades throughout that building. There are a couple of these you'll see a similar theme, technology upgrades, pavilions. We've done that across multiple buildings throughout the district. For 2024, next on tap for Eagle are new windows and associated flashing and caulking of those windows. For Elsmere Elementary, again, the outdoor pavilion has been completed, technology upgrades throughout that specific building. In 2024, the playground is going to be getting some new elements, a Jax climber that will have installation taking place shortly. There's also been an inclusive swing, a ten spin installed, and new playground borders have been installed as well. That's a picture of the pavilion in, at Elsmere. When we first, when we last talked about this in November, the pad had been installed, but that was the one lagging pavilion that was, needed to be procured and installed. We have COs for certificate of occupancies for all of the pavilions, which is an interesting component because you usually don't need a certificate of occupancy for an outdoor building where there are no walls, but we do have those should there be an issue of fire of some sort in outside pavilion. But Gleymont Elementary, a lot of work has been done, again, the outdoor pavilion, stormwater management has been completed, the bathroom renovations, one of which is associated with the picture in the upright hand corner, new gym wall pads, flooring replacement in five classrooms, and technology upgrades. In 2024, a lot of work is slated to continue if not start, playground expansion, sidewalk replacement, various masonry repair, security upgrades, gym storage and door replacements, renovation of the pit area, which is a communal area for, for students and staff within Gleymont, replacement of the gymnasium rooftop ventilation unit, and replacing of the boilers. We thought it was wise to wait to replace the boilers until sometime in the spring, just so everyone's nice and warm over the course of the winter. At Hammergrill, again, outdoor pavilion, site drainage, a lot of work at Hammergrill, particularly on the front side of the building. They took out some, some trees, installed a new curbs, a new flagpole, and general meeting place right outside the, the main part of the building. The boiler has been replaced. In 2024, we're looking to continue with the parking lot repairs, installation of the new playground equipment, which includes two cozy cocoons. I just put that on there because I like to say cozy cocoons, but, and one moon rock climber. During 2024, we'll also run into phase two, which will include a lot of inside work, including the pit area, significant HVAC upgrades, which you'll see on the rooftop unit replacement and ventilation upgrades, door replacements, and some of the original construction wings. Slingerlins windows issues have been addressed, technology upgrades have taken place, outdoor pavilion, and a lot of outdoor space upgrades have been completed. In 2024, we are almost slated to turn over the E and L basement area to, back to, to the teachers. The framing and sheetrock of that area has been completed, painting is completed, ceilings are done, flooring is being installed presently, and we expect that to be turned over in late January 2024, all except for the window shades, which there's been a delay in that purchase and install. Next up for Slingerlins is also the Slingerlins cafeteria stage, new offices for the counselors and various sort of inside baseball or inside building components in terms of waterline replacements and duck work and ventilation improvements. Middle school, a lot of work going on in the middle school, some of which you'll see on the outside, some of which you'll see on the inside. Completed thus far is the tennis court resurfacing, drainage improvements, stormwater, stormwater retention has been replaced, except that has not been restored because of some additional paving that needs to take place over the course of the spring, new roofing, purchase installation of new 3D printers, exhaust system, which is new in the tech shop classroom. 2024, we're continuing our modernization of the LMC, which is one of the, the crown jewels of the capital project. For the LMC, furniture has been ordered for delivery and installation. We're anticipating that to be January 15th. Floors and casework are close to being finished. Ceilings are in process, they're still doing some overhead work in terms of running cabling and wiring. The technology clean room is in process. We are waiting on the delivery of a new window to maintain sightlines between the clean room and the rest of the library. The fax room, that's been an interesting project element. We are still continuing with the floor leveling. I think we're on our seventh try here. We anticipate that this will be a completed version. The additional floor leveling has not been an added cost to the district, but that has been sort of an issue in terms of scheduling. There was some asbestos abatement that took place earlier in 2023 associated with the fax room that had, that has been resolved. It's a very nice space. It's all, it's sort of an open design concept with the open design with duck work that has been painted white, gives the space a very open airy presence to that particular room. The equipment, including your ranges, your refrigerators, your, your other kitchen equipment is onsite, ready for installation once the room is ready and available to do so. Some additional casework and fixtures needs to be completed. The middle school auditorium, the board voted and approved the three contracts for the general contractor, mechanical and electrical at its last board meeting at the, at the end of December. We anticipate that construction will begin promptly on January 22nd, taking into consideration the middle school play. We'll jump right on that as soon as that is complete. Just a couple of pictures of the middle school. You have the existing auditorium on the lower left-hand corner, and the upper one is the, a picture of the LMC. Pictures really don't do it justice. We'll, we'll certainly give folks tours when, when everything is open, so you can get a firsthand view.
Do you have a question, Catherine?
Still looking at January 27th, or something for the reopening of the OMC?
That's the, well, the furniture's all in on time and installed, right?
It's, we're probably looking like towards the tail end of January, early February.
Cool.
On the high school, the turf field has been completed, which, again, one of the crown jewels of the capital project. It's been great. A lot of teams have been outside practicing, even while it was still under construction in certain instances. Track refurbishments, new scoo, new scoreboards, softball dugouts have been refurbished and classied up, tennis courts have been resurfaced, new auto shop equipment and security camera upgrades in additions throughout the building. Presently, you'll see that the turf bleachers are installed. We anticipate that those will be done by the end of January. The stringers are up. We just need to get the additional seating, and the only outstanding item for the turf field will be the press box that is, will ship shortly. They'll actually lift and place the press box on top of the bleachers once the bleachers are installed, and then the last couple of items will be just electrical power and communications and security cameras in that press box, and that'll be all said and done. The concession stand and restroom facilities, we now have power and heat in those areas, which will allow the internal painting, electrical plumbing to carry forward over the next several weeks, so that'll be ready for spring. The softball fence will be completed by the end of this week. And in the high school, we are running, you'll see some folks in the, the wings running cabling for the fire alarm and fire suppression system. That is running in parallel with the existing fire system that we have online presently. When everything's ready, set, and go, we'll unplug one system, plug in the next one without interruption of service. We also have generator upgrades and server room upgrades slated over the course of the next few weeks. Couple pictures of the new scoreboard outside of the turf field, and then we got some, some activity going on at the, the end of the fall seasons. Transportation, transportation looks a little bit of a mess right now, but that's a good sign. You'll see that a lot of construction right on the Van Dyke side of the road. The fuel island and pumps were totally taken out and replaced, which we anticipate that at least one side of the fuel pumps closer to Van Dyke will be online probably by the end of January, which will allow buses to start being able to sort of do a round robin on at least one side of the fuel island, which will be beneficial because presently we're actually filling up buses at the Cumberland gas station over on 9W, because that's the place that can accommodate 53-foot buses easily. The white wrapping is the shelter for the workers who are working on the administrative component of the building. That won't be ready until sometime in November under the present schedule, but a lot of work is being done on that. The walls, the exterior walls are almost completed. They have the brick veneer ready to be, have that be installed, and a lot of work is, will be going on internally on there. There hasn't been a disruption to the actual transportation building because at the very end they'll break through the, the wall that's separating the existing transportation building with the new administrative wing.
Does anyone have any questions about any of the current projects or upcoming ones?
So right now, we're in a bit of a, I won't say lull because you may not see as much big things happening. You can see a lot of finish work, and that you sometimes takes the, the longest amount of time getting your, you know, your paint up, your, your various trims and the like, but a lot of that will be completed over the winter months. We're sort of limited in terms of the larger projects that we can undergo now because we are in session. We can run, for example, the fire alarm system because that, that's being done at night. We try to work around not being as least, limiting disruption to, to students and faculty in the day as possible. So we'll get through the springs, spring season, and then once June hits, we'll be right back at some of the larger remaining project elements in design because everything does need to be complete for the capital project by the end of calendar year 2024.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
That was it. Any other questions for Jody on that?
Next up is the board report. I don't have a lot because it feels like we've just had a meeting and then we had a break. But first, Happy New Year to everybody, and I hope everyone did have a nice relaxing break. A note, if anyone is interested in listening, the governor's State of the State is January 9th at 1:00 PM. And two upcoming events, one, the Poetry Out Loud is tomorrow evening at 6:30 here at the high school and the cafeteria, and it is free and open to the public if anyone wishes to attend. And then the middle school musical is coming up at, on the weekend of January 18th to the 21st.
Anybody have anything else? You?
You mentioned Cathy Hochul. I was curious whether today's announcement about, you know, going back to basics and such is going to affect us in the short term at all, or what the prognosis is?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be curious how the funding is for the training of teachers and going to the higher ed, how that's going to work, but I don't see it. We're already doing a lot of that, so I think we're in a good, a good spot for that.
In terms of events, I was going to mention Poetry Out Loud also next week, next Wednesday. I think we're going to have a couple of students tell us about it later, but there's the Empty Bowls fundraiser, which is always a cool event. I know we're all invited to go, you know, get some soup. It's also the same time as the art night at the high school, so you can see some art and get some soup and support the recorders all at the same time. That's next Wednesday, 5 to 7.
Thank you.
And just for context, for those who are following along studiously to the meeting, the, the Back to Basics plan that Ian was just referencing is, was an announcement that the governor made today as part of her rollout of her State of the State priorities, and her announcement that one of her priorities for the coming year will be focus on reading, and so, just providing a little context there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hi, next are student reports. Do we have anybody from Students High School Senate? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I'm a Student Senate rep, and Senate's main focus right now is we just started planning kind of like a winter spirit week that's going to take place after midterms. So that's going to be beginning of February, and our focus is just kind of for a relaxing, fun week for everyone. There's going to be games everyone can participate in, and then that Saturday at the end of the week, we're going to have our snowflake dance. So we're hoping, they haven't had that in a few years because COVID, so we're hoping to bring that back. We tried last year, we're hoping to bring it back successfully this year, and the Spirit Week is going to kind of hype that up and just give everyone a chance after midterms to kind of come together. And that's really our main focus right now. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our presentation this evening, and I will turn it back over to John for our fiscal overview 2022, 2023.
I was negligent in not recognizing Jo Ellen Gardner for all the photography work that she did today, so just want to thank her because without the pictures, you lose a little bit of something in, in the presentation. So you have the luxury of hearing me twice today. If the first one wowed you, this one's going to just knock your socks off in terms of fiscal year updates for, for the end of the year. So at the last meeting, we had our auditors come in and give sort of a brief presentation on where the district closed out its audit. We had a successful audit with some findings that we were able to address with a corrective action plan, nothing significant, but what I wanted to do was, the audit sort of loses a little bit without some, some of the, the summary financial data behind how the district closed out the 22, 23 fiscal year. So I wanted to briefly touch upon that, those numbers tonight. So I wanted to start off with the general funds, particularly on the revenue side. We start with revenue because without the revenue, the expense appropriation side of the ledger doesn't work. Side-by-side comparison for 21, 22, and 22, 23 across some of the major revenue streams that the district receives, school taxes, a slight increase based on the, the change in tax rates, star pilots down a little bit, and associated penalties, charges for services were roughly flat, large increase in both interest and rent, particularly tied to interest earnings. The district has really been trying to take advantage of the current interest rate market environment before they change. So in 22, 23, much of that increase is specifically tied to its interest and earnings on its cash balances and the various banks the district maintains a, a partnership with. I can tell you that for 23, 24, for the first six months, we're at roughly $1.6 million in interest earnings alone. We've been really trying to maximize that, making sure that people get paid and vendors get paid at the same time, but really maximizing the amount of available cash that we are investing in CDs and, and other interest-bearing opportunities. I can't necessarily guarantee that we will be able to maintain the same pace in terms of interest and earnings for two reasons, one of which is we're, our cash balances are decreasing only because we had a large influx of cash associated with the capital project. Capital project's underway, we're paying our capital project vendors, so there's less cash available. We're certainly in a strong cash position, but the overall available universe of cash I have to invest is slowly decreasing. Couple of the fact that the Fed looks to be lowering interest rates in the near future, but in the interim, we'll continue to invest wisely and prudently to make sure that we have additional revenue come in to offset expenditures. The sale of property was a large increase from one year to the next, really associated with the sale of the buses in our 22, 23 fiscal year. State and federal aid, increase of roughly $487,000 tied to increases in foundation aid, some minor decreases in miscellaneous and transfers, for an overall year-to-year increase on the revenue side of roughly $1.8 million. On the expenditure side, broken these up into some of the, again, key categories of appropriation and expenditures. General support down roughly by $400,000, really tied to operations and maintenance. Instructional, which is one of the larger components of the district's budget, an increase of roughly $2.8 million. Employee benefits, I want to touch upon this a little bit later in, in a later slide, an increase of roughly $1.7 million. Debt service was down because we had paid off some debt over the course of the 21, 22 year, which did not require an expenditure in 22, 23. And you'll, we'll see the transfer to capital roughly $13.5 million, which was from our capital reserves to fund the capital project. So overall, we had a rough increase of $15.6 million in total expenditures. That's a little bit inflated because of the transfer associated for the capital fund. So you back that off, it's really just approximately, year-to-year increase of roughly $2 million. Want to talk a little bit about fringe benefits because of what we're seeing both between the chart in front of you as well as what we're experiencing for the 23, 24 fiscal year. Health insurance in particular, we saw roughly a 13.3% increase between 21 and 22 to 22 and 23. I can tell you that that trend has not subsided into 23, 24. Just looking at the July to November claims for health insurance, we're seeing prescription drug increases of roughly 14.2% for the same time period. And on the medical side, depending on which insurance company you're looking at, anywhere between 6.5 and 7.4% increase on the medical. On the pharmaceutical side specifically, we're seeing a large increase in both your specialty and non-specialty drugs, non-specialty ones in particular, large increases in your prediabetic and diabetes drugs, those drugs that you're seeing on TV, those drugs that are roughly running $1,000 a month per script, is really driving what we're seeing in pharmaceutical costs. Well, I'll have more to report on that during the budget process, but I did want to give you a sense that there are some significant increases coming. So we're looking at 14% on the pharmaceutical side for this year, which does not necessarily take into consideration any future increases for our 24, 25 fiscal year. The TRS and ERS reflect the retirement system expenditures, TRS for our teachers' retirement system, ERS for our employee retirement system. The teachers went up by roughly $285,000. The ERS went down by roughly $400,000. The ERS can tend to swing wildly one year, from one year to the next. It's tied really to where the stock market ended on March 31st of any given year. I can tell you that for the 23, 24 fiscal year, I just paid $1,009,000 for the ERS, and I can tell you that for 24, 25, it's going to be roughly about $2.3 million. So for the budget coming up, we're going to be roughly $600,000 more on the ERS retirement than where we ended in 22, 23. Workers' comp and miscellaneous insurance costs, year-to-year increases were within the, the expected norm, so we saw roughly a $1.7 million increase on fringe benefits General fund balance and reserves, these are the various savings accounts the district maintains. Incumbrances reflect what we have committed at the end of the year but not, may not have necessarily paid. In 2021, it was a little bit higher because we had committed to the purchase of the buses that we hadn't necessarily paid. We didn't have a similar-sized encumbrance for the end of '22. Workers' comp remained flat at $840,000. Employee benefits, $1.4 million, our tax cert reserve at roughly a half million dollars, and our retirement reserves for both ERS and TRS are roughly $5.3 million, which left an undesignated fund balance for the end of '22, '23 of $3.9 million. There's some opportunities here as we move forward for the 20, let me write, our 23, 24 closeout. There is room to put additional funding in on the employee benefit side. What we usually use employee benefit reserve for is if there is a significant number of individuals that retire, that we can pay out their, their compensated absences, whether it's their sick leave accruals or vacation leave accruals. It's good that we have some money there, but I can tell you that at the end of '22, '23, the value of those compensated absences were roughly $3.3 million. So if all those individuals had decided to retire or leave district service at that point in time, there'd be roughly a $3.3 million outlay of employee benefit, cash benefit associated with those accruals. That's probably not going to happen, but as Dr. Hurst has mentioned at some of his presentations, we are approaching somewhat of a retirement cliff where students, I'm not, not students, teachers and staff are approaching retirement age, which we may just want to consider adding some funding as part of this year's closeout to, to minimize that cost. There is also room in the There is also room in the TRS reserve from an arithmetic perspective. The district is allowed to increase the TRS reserve by 2% of the annualized salary for teachers, but no more than 10% of covered salaries. So we could have added roughly $715,000 to the TRS reserve if we had available funding to do so, for a total of $3.5 million specifically for the TRS reserve. Right now, the TRS reserve sits at $2.6 million. On the undesignated fund balance, you may recall that we can have roughly four, no more than 4% in undesignated fund balance associated with the district's operating budget. If you were to look at an operating budget of $106 million, 4% of that number would leave you with a undesignated fund balance of roughly $4.3 million. We have 3.9, that's a difference of roughly $350,000. Could we have added more to that? Yes, we could have, but it would have had to come at the expense of something else. So, Bernie, I can get next slide. So keeping in mind that we could have moved an additional $300,000 into fund balance and still be within that 4% threshold, keep in mind that we actually added $6 million to the 22 capital reserve at the end of the year. I put this slide separately because it's really one of the larger saving accounts that we use for purposes of capital acquisition and projects. The 2015 capital reserve was exhausted in 2023, associated with the 2021 capital project. The 2019 capital reserve at the end of 2023 had $1.7 million. We used roughly $13.5 million of reserve funding to offset the capital project costs. And, excuse me, and at the end of 2022, we had, I'm sorry, at the end of 2023, with the addition of $6 million in revenue over expenses, we had a value of $12.2 million. Fast forward to October, the middle school auditorium project, we then committed $4.6 million for the middle school auditorium project specifically out of reserves, which reduced the balance of the 2019 capital reserve and put the 22 capital reserve at roughly $9.3 million. The, we have authority for the 22 capital reserve to be 20 million, no more than $20 million. So as we close out 2324, depending on where we may stand in overall expenditures and revenue, there will be room to move additional funding into that 22 capital reserve so long as it doesn't exceed the $20 million authorized threshold. Quick, similar analysis for the school lunch fund. Lunch fund is going to be a little bit interesting only because that particular fund was impacted by the pandemic and availability of state and federal funding. So you'll see a significant uptick in both meals and à la carte and snacks. Kids were fully onsite for the 2223 school year, buying meals, buying their snacks, buying their drinks. So there's roughly a $763,000 increase associated with meals and food products. That 763 is broken roughly $661,000 associated with lunch and breakfast specifically, and roughly $323,000 for à la carte and snack items. Minor decrease in faculty and staff sales, state and federal, large decrease only because the federal pandemic money was not present in 2223 as it was in 2122. USDA food received was up by roughly $50,000 and a change in write-off of student debt and general fund transfer of roughly $15,000. So that left you a year-to-year change of roughly $419,000 on the revenue side. Similar analysis on the expenditure appropriation side for a net change of roughly $121,000. There weren't a significant number of dollar value changes on the expenditure side. And then just a quick side-by-side comparison of the school lunch fund, fund balance. For the past four years, this is a chart that shows you where the fund balance was at the start of the year, taking in consideration the revenue in, the expenditures out, and where the fund balance ends for food service. So presently, there's a healthy fund balance of roughly $225,000 at the end of 2223 for the food service fund. The food service fund does tend to burn expenditures greater than the revenue it receives. So over the course of the next several years, will probably draw down that fund balance. But if that fund balance did not exist, it would have to be a need for additional funding to come from the general fund. So we will try to manage that as much as possible. But again, the expenditures are somewhat fixed on the food service side, whereas the revenue on the federal and state funds, funding can vary, and it doesn't necessarily offset completely the costs associated with the food service fund.
Anybody have questions for John? Ewan?
I have a couple. We discussed previously in terms of revenue, property tax and such, there was a pilot potentially coming to an end, and I believe there's a possible update on this.
There is. I appreciate that question, Ewan. So in, when we were going through the budget process for the 2324 budget process, the PSEG pilot was coming into the last year of that pilot agreement. That was roughly $3.7 million that was going to roll off as a revenue stream. We had planned for that. All else being equal, that loss of the pilot was going to translate to roughly a 9%, 9.5% property tax increase. In the end of, about the end of November, Superintendent and I received notification that PSEG may be interested in extending the pilot for an additional length of time. On December 19th or so, I went to the Bethlehem IDA Industrial Development Agency meeting. The IDA passed a, an amendment to the existing PSEG pilot program extending it for two calendar years for which the district will benefit one additional year of pilot revenue at roughly $3.7 million. So for our 2425 budget process, the pilot that we were anticipating to roll off will continue for one additional year. So that helps us for 2425, does not necessarily change the game significantly only because the loss of revenue has just been moved to the 2526 fiscal year. So we will continue to do our due diligence in terms of planning for that, maximizing additional revenue streams and minimizing costs so we do not present to the taxpayers a significant tax increase that's outside of the tax cap environment.
In the documents you gave us, oh, go ahead.
Could I follow up on that topic?
Yeah.
Is that all right? Thank you. So just refresh my memory, this is a payment in lieu of taxes, this is what pilot stands for, this is money that's negotiated with this company to help make the various municipal governments whole. So if after next school year, the next budget year, the pilot disappears, what are our projections that, or do we have any sense of what projections might be for taxable income on those properties and on that entity? Do you know what I mean?
I'm going to answer the question I think I heard you ask. If I don't, stop me. So the value of the PSEG parcel or lots roughly $100 million in assessed value. When the pilot officially ends in 20, for our taxing purposes, it'll be for our 2526 school year, that $100,000 will roll onto the assessed rolls, onto the assessment rolls, which means the district's tax levy will be spread across a wider value of assessed value, which would lower the tax rate for all the residences and commercial businesses, all else being equal. So we don't get any additional tax levy, but the loss of the pilot to the district in terms of a cash revenue stream translates into a decreased tax rate for individuals and businesses in the community.
Okay. And it doesn't necessarily, I'll, I'm going to keep asking, I'll keep coming back to this, I bet. I apologize.
No, that's fine.
It would likely though, when we were projecting that we wouldn't have it for this coming year, the impact was potentially we could have had to go out at 9%, right?
Right.
Which we would, said we wouldn't.
Would not do.
I would anticipate, depending on all the other factors with the calculation, that following year would be similar. We would have a much higher, because of the loss of revenue, we would have a much higher potential tax cap that we may need to consider. Again, not 9%. Is that what you're getting at?
That's kind of, I just, this is something I have to relearn every year, and it kind of makes, it kind of makes it great.
Because there's multiple factors involving how that calculation comes up. It's on, you know, what's your debt service, what's your bonds, all of those pieces. But I don't anticipate they would be much different one year out.
And let me put this very simply, ending the payment in lieu of taxes, it's $3.7 million, does not then just mean they're going to be paying $3.7 million in taxes?
No. If you, if, they're paying $3.7 million in pilot revenue. If they were to be on the rolls today, they'd pay $2.2 million in taxes to the school district. So from the entity side, it'd be roughly a million and a half dollars worth of school district tax savings.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me. Thank you.
Ewan, did you have another question?
Yeah, a couple of smaller things, you know, if you dig into the details of revenue stuff. There's a commercial gaming grant, someone funding an esports team for the high school?
So the state aid bulk that you saw, roughly $28 million, is broken into various subcomponents, some of which is foundation aid, which is the largest amount of roughly $18 million. There's transportation aid at roughly $4.7 million, and then, you know, some of the funding sources associated with state aid come from the New York State Lottery system.
Oh, okay.
So OTB bits, you're, so those are broken up into.
Money for gaming, not money for gaming.
That's correct.
It's too bad. Similarly.
But if you're suggesting alternative revenue sources, you know, Ewan, because we have a $3.7 million pilot rolling off.
There's also an excess cost aid.
That's associated with state education law for Committee for Special Education Districts, where the costs with the provision of special education care exceeds the threshold for that district. So that's roughly additional $5 million in state education costs that the district is occurring, being offset in part by state aid for special education kids.
That was a miss.
Bob, did you have a question?
I had one, yeah. Very quickly, you had mentioned earlier the, sometimes the employee retirement system fluctuated.
Yep.
And the teacher's retirement system, it seems, doesn't, and maybe you could just explain quickly the difference between the two and why.
Appreciate that. So, so the teacher retirement system is based on what the aggregate salary value in terms of earnings for teachers are, times a set percentage rate. I think the last, this coming budget was 10.1%. So it's X times Y gets you Z in terms of what the actual cost is. We get the rate from, from the state, we apply it against the aggregate salary base. We, it doesn't change wildly, it changes by a couple of fractions of a, of a percentage point for TRS. ERS is a whole different ballgame. We have employees in various tiers. Those tiers are assigned different rates. Your tiers between 1 and 6, tier 1 is your, your most rich beneficial retirement plan. As a result, it carries a significantly higher percentage of salary costs. Those percentages sort of decrease as you work your way from tiers 1 through 6. Tier 6 is the newest, retirement tier has the lowest rate. As the district transitions employees from those richer tiers out to tier 6, we should see some savings. But again, the percentages associated with those tiers are really tied to the health of the stock market at the close of March 31st of any fiscal year. So if you have a really bad year on March, you know, 31st, whatever the indexies that the controller Tom DiNapoli looks at, he's going to give you a rate based on all those tiers. That rate carries over, they use a five-year average, every year, one year drops off, a new year drops in. So if you have a bad year, that year stays with you for roughly five years until it drops off. So we saw this in the pandemic, March of 2020, the market was all over the place, but it was only for that two-week period and everything rebounded. But that rate as of March 31st, 2020, it carried, and it's still in the equation, actually. They don't do a rebalancing in terms of like, okay, this was, this was a one-time phenomenon, we should sort of balance out in a different way. That's why they had the five years. So if you do have one bad year, it may get a little bit more normalized with the other years in the calculation.
Thank you.
Catherine, do you have another question?
I do, yeah, thank you. I mean, first of all, just, I just want to say thank you very much. Your knowledge is encyclopedia on, on the issues that you work on, and I appreciate that. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit to the district's eligibility or not for free meal programs and how that could impact, you know, what types of, what types of considerations go into that?
So presently, it's 40.
Forty percent.
Forty percent in terms of eligibility. There was a change to bring that down to 25%. The district, last time I checked, were at 13% at the district level.
And you're talking percentage of families that receive, that are eligible.
That are eligible.
Okay. Halfway. We're not that close.
We're not, yes.
We're not that close. We do hope through a couple of mechanisms to get that percentage higher, not, not simply because of getting free, free and reduced for all, but allowing some flexibility for those low-income families and children that could use it or that would need it. When we move to the BOSI's model for food service, BOSI's handles all of the free and reduced application processes on the district's behalf. Anecdotally, from BOSI's, for other districts that pursue the similar path, they saw an uptick in their free and reduced only because it's an arms-length transaction between the families and the school district processing and viewing the application. I appreciate there, there's sometimes an issue of pride, there's an issue of privacy. Families may not necessarily want whomever working in the district to know that they're applying for or seeking assistance in that regard. The thought is through a third-party entity that those fears may be abated and actually allow for a willingness to apply and receive those benefits.
Cool. Thank you. And then who are we charging or who's paying us rent? Who do we rent things to?
So there's facility use fees for clubs that come across, hey, I'd like to use the auditorium or use the gym.
Okay. Great. We're not like renting out one of the schools.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have any visitors who'd like to address the board on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Item 6, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items 1 through 4.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the following professional personnel action items 1 through 12.
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, I'll just comment that I see a lot of retirements on here, and while I certainly congratulate those who are retiring, that will, and thank them for their years of service to the district, it will be hard to, to replace them.
I have 13 items.
Oh.
Yeah, that's true.
I think it's 1 through 13, yes.
You are, you are correct. Let's just, I'll restate that, just to make it extra official. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items 1 through 13.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minor discussion. All of the folks retiring, you know, have given great service. One that's impacted my family, particularly Mark Warford, right? The middle school gardens, the scarecrows outside, there's been a lot of stuff. I hope somebody, they're assigning those duties, like, okay, who's building scarecrows?
For them, the job description?
Yeah, absolutely.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items 1 through 6.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action item number 1.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on non-agenda items. If we have any visitors who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, please come up to the microphone and state your name.
Molly Walatas.
I'm Karen McNay.
Hi, I'm a junior and president of Seasons for Peace and Survival at Bethlehem, we're the club that was mentioned earlier, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to mention our upcoming event, Empty Bowls, which will be January 10th, so a week from today, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. And it's as much soup as you want, as well as a piece of handcrafted pottery. We'll have just over 20 soups, it looks like. The cost is $10, and all proceeds will go to Capitol Roots.
I also want to mention that's the same night as the art exhibition at Bethlehem, so any people who would come to the Empty Bowls event or the art event would like, would see the other one. And then finally, I'd like to invite you all, and any visitors, and anybody you know to come, we'd like to see a great turnout, and it'd be great if we could see some board members at Empty Bowl.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, future meetings and events. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on January 17th, here at the high school, and anticipating executive session at 6:00 and reconvening to open session at 7:00. And on January 22nd, at 6 o'clock here at the high school, we have a policy committee Seeing no need to go, did you have something to say?
Just lagging that I won't be able to make the next policy meeting.
Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.